I will call our work session to order of Tuesday, August tenth, two thousand and twenty-one. We have two items on our work session tonight. The first item is with Operation Superintendent Chris Link, and we're going to be talking about Winter Parking Pilot Program. And then the second portion of our work session will be with Equity Administrator Blanca Martinez-Govina to look at our preliminary equity plan. So I will pass it, do I pass it to City Manager Rodriguez directly? Great, thank you.
Yes, Mayor. Thank you. I just want to open briefly and just say I'm really proud of this work. It has been a collaborative effort and very thoughtful. It's also been built on transparency and data. And, and I mean both the equity plan and the winter pilots work. So I think it's a, tonight you're going to see both the plan coming together on equity, but also you'll see equity in action. And so I just want to thank the departments have been working really hard on both and also the CARES team. And it has taken time, especially the, the winter parking. We met with many departments over the course of more than a year. And I think that that is, it's an example of what it, what it looks like to apply the equity lens to an essential service. And there are some important considerations for you tonight. But I think the learning for me in going through this process is that in order to do this work well, it is going to take time. So with that, I will turn it over to Superintendent Link.
Well, logically, on a hot humid summer day, we're going to talk about, you know. Jizz, if anybody forgot, this is what's, uh, what's coming in a couple of weeks, so. I feel like at times I'm bear bad news, but if you're sick of the heat, this is what's coming. So I just have a quick background about our snowplow operations. We see snow plowing in Public Works as the number one most important service we provide. We take it very seriously. These bullets are the why. This is why we snowplow. This is why we do that. All of those reasons, the biggest one, I guess, for, for me is, is the quality of life part. We want to be able to get people to, kids to school, people to work as soon as possible after a snowfall. So that's the way we've looked at snow plowing ever since I've been here. We have a meeting every year with, with all of our, our snowplow operators and staff. And this is a map. It looks very similar from when it did, I guess, twenty years ago, but we're always changing. We're always trying to evolve. We're always trying to look to see how we can do things better. Streetscape design has been part of that. You know, there's, there's other items that come up, why we change these. But these, these areas or districts are set up for efficiency. We want to have all of these areas, if possible, plowed and done at the same time. Sometimes breakdowns, things like that happen where they're not, and we have to allocate pieces of equipment differently. But this is something that we look at with our staff every year. And this is just the streets side. Of course, we do trails and sidewalks and parks and things like that. Just a quick background on our snow, snow emergency procedures now. A lot of time goes into, you know, watching the weather. We're watching the weather. When do we come in? When are we going to start plowing? A lot of that's done, actually, all of this is done kind of collaboratively. Of course, we have public works staff, but then I'm talking to a public safety staff also to, to, to determine when we're going to come in and take and tow. Every storm is different. Again, like I said before, we try to have our crews in as soon as we can after the snow starts falling, or stops falling. So we don't have a, a general start time. It isn't like we come in at midnight every time. It changes with every snowstorm. You know, that's where, that's the gray part of this a little bit, you know. I'd like to say it's this easy and I just go down a checklist and, and we, we show up and do things. But there, there's a lot of discussions that go into this. The tagging and towing specifically, we have to give our, our towing company four hour notice before they come in. So if we call a snow emergency at midnight, they're not going to be available till four in the morning. So there, there's a lot of wiggle room there, too. Again, the snow totals, too, the type of snow kind of go into that, too, where, you know, if we're going to get three inches of wet, heavy snow and it settles down to two, I'm not, or, or just under two, I'm not going to call a snow emergency. It just, it just doesn't make sense. It's, it's not purely by, by inches falling, it's type of snow, things like that, too. Public notifications, once we determine there's going to be a snow emergency, we do post on the city website. We, if you've signed up for City News, you'll get an email, you can get a text. We do post on a couple of news channels and we have a, a phone line that we update also. This, along with the plowing, is something we always look at every year. Where else can we, we notify? Blanca, you had a, a great suggestion the other day about notifying on a Latino radio station. That's something that I'll, I'll definitely be looking at this, this year. During a snow event, we, we plow, we take and tow, and we try to notify periodically on social media when we're going to be done, where plows are at. We, we try to push out as much of that information as possible.
So, can you hear me? So I'll just briefly introduce as to why this pilot program. And as Katie mentioned, we wanted to make sure that the services that we are providing, especially within this program, that we understand what are the burdens to those communities that have been historically excluded. And again, I use the phrase historically excluded, and this is something where language matters. Sometimes we refer to communities as they are marginalized or underrepresented. But it is important to begin to change that language to say, yes, these communities have been excluded from either services or to access. So one of the things that we did is we really did look at the equity lens. And this was provided to us by the CARES team. And we'll go into detail as to how that came about in the next part of the work session. But we really did meet with all of the departments and went through each of the steps. And you do have in front of you an outline, a draft, that will eventually come to the public. But that is a step-by-step lens that walks through, really thinking deeply as to what are the impacts to each one of these historically excluded communities. So we really did hear from each department as to what do they believe are some of those implications and unintended consequences. So for example, for Public Works, they were really focusing on what does it mean to really do equitable plowing, and doing it safely as well? Because there, there could be some, some issues when, when you are going around some of those high-density areas. For, and please feel free, we have some of the department directors here that they can pitch in. For public safety, it was really thinking about reducing the tagging and towing during a snow emergency, but also maintain that accessibility for response times. For fire, also, again, making sure that it's accessible for, and maintaining those fast response times. For community development, really thinking deeply as to how do you mitigate some of those impacts in the high-density areas? As that is an ongoing, and it's going to be an ongoing issue for the future. And then for communications and community engagement, Neil and I, the, one of the discussions we've been having ongoing for the last two years since I started working is how is it that we really think deeply about the engagement? And how is it that we find creative ways to really engage these communities that may not have access to the traditional ways of digital engagement?
This is one of the data points that we're, we're looking at. This, this map tells a story to me. It's, and I'm, I'm a big part of this map. So this, this is part of the data. These are tolls from twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. And, and the pilot program, we're going to start with the area on Cedar Avenue, north to south. And then there's another dot down by Chicago Avenue around seventy-eighth. So as, as part of this pilot program, we're going to, to, to really try to dial into those areas. Some of the other areas, there's, there's a little bit of, you know, there, there's, there's items where I've sent police because of, hey, this is our current ordinance, right? Two inches, we need to get these cars moved because of narrow roads. The far west side would be, so, so the, the story that this tells me is that there was a construction project on Xerxes Avenue in Edina. This is where all of the construction workers parked. So that's why we're going to see a little more up there. If you go up north by the railroad tracks, again, that's a narrow street. That's, that's some, that's an area where I have directed police personnel to go ticket and tag. It's just, it's a width issue. Again, working under our current ordinance, what it said, to maintain that access, I've sent them there. And then the other, the other area that where I do send police personnel pretty much every snowfall, Chicago Avenue, between seventy, seventy-seventh and seventy-eighth, again, narrow road parked on both sides. I can barely get a pickup through there to, to move snow. So again, we're going to focus on Cedar Avenue and then that Chicago Avenue between seventy-seventh, seventy-eighth for the pilot program.
So as part of the ongoing review, when we sat with all of the departments, and again, this shows what it takes to do an, an equity lens, which is meeting with all the departments and making sure that we are hearing from, from each one of them. So the other part that we discussed was how is it that we involve stakeholders? What is this, what is this project going to entail? And how do we analyze the data? So some of the things that we walked through was, in terms of Public Works, they would work on collecting complaints from residents and staff relating to the plowing operations. Also thinking about, does no emergency events and collecting any data related to that? And revising how the routes are done and really thinking about how that can be done more effectively? And really collecting some of that data that is existing and how that can be further analyzed. From public safety, there was a discussion about how is it that those complaints are collected? And maybe the chief can go into detail as, as to some of the other aspects, because they are a little bit more detail-specific.
Thank you, Blanca. As far as collecting complaints on, on towing and, and ticketing, we do get a lot of complaints of why are we not out there ticketing and towing more? And so we collect those areas and we usually go out and, and try to enforce those equitable by ticketing and towing. And the way we ticket is the officer will go out there, write a citation, which has to be done before the vehicle is impounded. He puts it in a pla, he or she puts it in a plastic bag, and then the tow trucks come when they have time. So it's, it's not really a process that is a science. It's more just to make sure that we can get the vehicles off the road for the plow truck drivers. So we collect those complaints and on average, we probably get anywhere between thirty to forty complaints, personal emergency of asking us to come out and ta, ticket and tow in a certain area. Now, that could be single home residential, it could be high density. But we do get a lot of complaints. So those are the complaints that we track on a yearly basis. And we go out there and try to obviously resolve the problem. Hopefully, people move their cars, whether they see the officer coming and they know they're going to get a ticket, or they see the tow truck, tow truck go down the street. So that's how we handle the complaint process.
Chief, I just had a quick question. When it comes to the towing, is it, are the tow trucks still called even after the streets have been plowed? So I mean, I understand, I understand like the, the reason you would tow it so you could plow the streets. But if the street's already been plowed and it's been ticketed, the sanction seems to, like the, one sanction is the, is the ticket. And then if the road's already been plowed, then it would, it seemed like it, it's not trying to accomplish a public safety goal, but it's maybe like a second more punitive step. Do you have any, any thoughts on that?
If, if the, if the vehicle's plowed in and it's, it's been plowed curb-to-curb technically, it's still in violation. So the ticket would be there and the tow truck company would come out and probably still tow it so that the trucks can come through and clean up the street.
Okay.
Maybe we're going to get into this. I'm just curious to, is that individual complaint process necessary? Because it just seems so prone to, I have a neighbor I don't like and I want to call out their car. In fact, I hear those complaints specifically, why aren't you towing this exact neighbor I don't like? Or there's an apartment building I don't like. It just seems like when it's coming from the snowplow operators to prioritize that area, it would, is more likely to be based on snow need versus just somebody getting their neighbor in trouble.
Well, we take, we take a lot of citizen complaints. I mean, we look at it from an objective perspective. I mean, if it's a situation where why aren't you always towing or ticketing my neighbor? You know, we take that into consideration. The officers will go out there and at least take the complaint and take a look at the situation to determine if it's worth a ticket and tow. Most of the direction we do take, though, is from the tow truck driver, or from the plow truck drivers to go out there to make sure that the streets are safe. But we do get some areas, we do have problem areas that are not just high-density issues that are residential. And so those are the areas that we try to get on top of quickly. And the way when we go out and take it and tow, we rotate it around the city. But we do get some complaints, year after year, unfortunately, of some of the same issues in residential areas.
Okay, thanks for clarifying.
It's probably worth, I guess, talking about tagging and towing. That's not exact science either. It's all dependent on availability of tow truck drivers also. So on a two and a half inch event, we probably have a pretty, pretty good batch of, of tow trucks. As that total increases, we, we lose availability because all of their cities around us are, are in the snow emergency mode, too. So it's, it's also based on call load. So if police personnel are busy during that time, they're going to go do those calls and, and snow emergency becomes secondary. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
So to wrap up, public safety, another part of this pilot program was just to revise some of that engagement process. What does that look like? And public safety is already doing a lot of community engagement, but just thinking about adding, adding that layer specific to this project in that geographic area. In addition to continue to track the emergency response times. So are there any delays? And then again, tracking in that specific area. For fire, it's a similar concept, continuing to track the emergency response in the pilot area. For community development, just thinking ahead, this is a pilot program for only one area. So just thinking, what are some other high-density areas throughout the city that may require similar elements? Or really looking into the equity lens perspective? And then with communications and community engagement, just working with all the departments and our communications manager to really think about what, what is it? What are the communities that have been historically excluded? And how is it that this elements of the communication can really get to them and be effective? But most importantly, be sustained throughout the pilot project and beyond. So if you look in your, in your one sheet, the draft of the equity lens, that's the first page of the whole document. But that's steps three and four combined. And which looks really into determining the benefits or the burden? And how is it that we advance opportunity? And again, minimize some of the harm to historically excluded communities. So each department really walked through, what does it mean? If we make changes, if we look at this from the equity perspective and really apply the equity lens, what are some of those unintended consequences? So for Public Works, it could mean changes to service delivery, right? Thinking about how is it, in terms of protecting the streets and protecting those investments, are there any changes that will be made? And then also extending some of those snow removal efforts. If we are changing the way that we're doing plowing, would there have to be one, snow removal? Two or three, are there any other different ways that the routes will have to be changed? For public safety, the tag and tow procedures? And also the possible loss of revenue if we reduce the, the tag and the towing as well? For fire, again, it's that safety measure. What does it mean for, for the fire trucks to get through if we are processing some of those times? And then it could increase the response times. For community development, what are, you know, what are the parking requirements? And then also, how is it that we're going to be working with those residents and those property owners? So in terms of advancing opportunity and really thinking deeply as to how would impact positively these communities is thinking about the educational process. One of the things that I brought up when we were having this discussion with the departments is that there, there could be some gaps in, in some communities as to what is a snow emergency really, really, what it looks like? And what does it mean for different areas? So really thinking about access, not only from that point of education, but also that access to being able to park your car if you have two to three jobs and you're not able to have time in between to do so. And also, what is it look to operationalize equity? You know, thinking at every single step from the moment that, or snowplows are going out into the community, what does that look like? The routes that they're taking, really thinking deeply of how equity is embedded in every single step of that process? Making sure that we are maintaining the roads that are accessible. And again, going back to the tagging and towing, like what is it look to make sure that we don't have a community that is being impacted and has historically been impacted by a large amounts of towing and, and tagging? And then what does it look like to have an equitable engagement process? And what does that look like to have, again, that maintain and sustain even beyond this process?
Okay, so what is the pilot program? It is, we're going to, we'd like to change the snow emergency threshold.
We'd like to change the snow emergency threshold from two inches to four inches. This was a big one. It's a big one for me. You know, you know, if you, you, you press me and ask me, why is it two inches? I don't have a really good, clear answer for you. I really don't. I can tell you every other city does it this way. I can tell you that. But, but why the two inches? You know, I can guess it gets into the perfect, or protection of assets and investments. You know, protecting the twenty million dollars we just put into our roads. It might be that, but I, I don't know. So that's, that's kind of how we came to that. Again, with, with, with moving that threshold up, in theory, there should be less snow emergencies, less opportunities to where we would have to ticket or tow. We're going to introduce some snow emergency parking areas with the, the sign that's attached there. We'd really like to look at Cedar Avenue from basically sixty-sixth to seventy-sixth. There'll be some areas that will have to swap sides, but that entire stretch. And then Seventy-Eighth Street from roughly Twelfth Avenue to Portland. Those are the areas that we're, we're going to pilot this year. The, the, I guess the caveat with the, the snow emergency parking areas is during a declared snow emergency, you can park in these areas, but after twenty-four hours, they have to be removed. It's almost like adding another snow emergency. Yep, park there, you're great, but you still have to get your cars out, out of, or your vehicle out of that, those areas so we can clean up. Mary?
Are those areas that normally parking would be allowed? So it would be a place for people that have to move their cars because it's a snow emergency to go to? Or is it just always open and most people don't park there, so it's a way for them to move over?
Actually, most of it is, is marked no parking right now. Seventy-Eighth Street for sure is, is all no parking at this, at this moment. So we'll, we'll be allowing parking there.
Is there currently anywhere that people can park if? Because I think the most common situation is that the city declares a snow emergency and the apartment building says, we need to clear the lot at X time. Is there currently, like, are people allowed to park in the parking lots of parks? Obviously, businesses can decide whether or not they allow people normally. But is there anywhere to go or is it, this would be the first space created?
I can answer that. What we've done over the last decade is we work with all the multi-housing units in the city to come up with alternate parking sites to move their vehicles. And normally what will happen is they'll call us to make sure that if some people in the area maybe put their car out on the street, we won't tag it and tow it in that area. And then they'll call us back once they've plowed their lot and their residents can move back into their buildings. We've done that for probably about the last ten years.
Any other questions on that part?
I'm just curious, the, what happens with cumulative amounts? So like if you, and this is the same question now, I guess. If you get three point five, two days in a row, do you, just, is that still not an emergency or what's the threshold?
No. Short answer, no. We're that good, we're going to plow that first three and a half inches, so we won't have to worry about it. I'm smiling under my mask.
But I mean, you're going to get.
But you're right. That's, that's a, it's a situation we've run into before where we have a multi-day snow event, right?
Yeah.
And typically, how we handle that, we're going to plow our main roads multiple times and we're going to try to get through residentials multiple times. So that's always the, the trigger and the trick that we all, all have communications about, our staff. You know, holy cow, what are we going to do? I would rather not keep my guys here for two days in a row. They, they get wore out. Will we plow some of it? Go home, come back later? Yeah, we'll probably do that. But that gets back to the, every snow event's different. And, and again, once you get a snowfall of about six inches, that's about all, all we can push efficiently anyhow. It gets any, any higher than that, it gets, it gets a little tough. So we're going to try to continually plow during that event with rest periods for our, our, our operators.
Okay, thanks.
So, sorry, a follow-up question. To clarify the, because I, I saw a bunch of, received a few comments from residents about this. Saw a bunch of comments on social media that I think people misinterpreted. Just want to clarify that the current or this proposed snow emergency does not determine when plows come, but just when cars need to be moved.
Yep, you're exactly right. Realistically, there should be next to zero effect on how we plow snow. We plow snow a lot. If there's an inch or an inch and a half, we'll go out and we'll, we'll scrape the streets. Nothing's going to change plowing-wise, just the threshold, when there's going to be a declared snow emergency.
Quick, quick question. Where on Seventy-Eighth Street is that second parking area?
The proposed area is going to be on the north side of Seventy-Eighth Street, roughly between Twelfth Avenue and Portland Avenue. It's a one-way right now, a very, very, very wide street. It makes a lot of sense to, to add some parking there.
No, I, I appreciate that. I just, I'll, I'll, a, a word of advocacy for my, for my ward. And, and even my own, anecdotally, my, my own family. My brother rents a house with five other individuals and there's no space for him to park. And so there, there are those, on, on, on all sides of the city, there, there are those challenges. So as we look for a pilot program, if there was any consideration for, for folks on the other side of the city, too, that would be, that'd be helpful.
Great, great question. We did look citywide, but with this being so new, we, we kind of worked with those areas that are most dense. And, and those are the, the areas where we identified. For a pilot program, I, I think they work out very well. It doesn't mean that we'll never move outside of these areas, but I, I just think it's a good idea for us to pilot it, work out the kinks before we expand to other places. But, but you're, you're exactly right. This isn't, this isn't the only place we have, have an issue.
No, I, I appreciate that. I guess my question would be, is anything going to change between now and the pilot? If this particular solution, if there isn't capacity on our side of the city to address it now, what would be the, if, if this works well, how would it be different? What, what other resources, like the, the city's not necessarily going to, going to change. So how, how could this, in the future, if this was successful, address residents on the other side of the city?
Yeah, I think that really, that really, that question really hinges on the reevaluation period that we have to do. We're going to go through the season, dial in, you know, figure out where this works, where it didn't. You know, I, I don't want to look too long range, but we could have a process through our traffic control committee to petition to. but we could have a process through our traffic control committee to petition to have areas added, right? I, I mean, so that, it's kind of where my head is going, I don't wanna go that far yet until we absolutely reevaluate this, this pilot program.
Thanks.
Uh just a couple other questions. So one, I was just, I mean, just curious in terms of why you're doing this solution versus like the Minneapolis style where every block is kind of treated the same and there's a shifting method or like odd even. I, first off, I totally agree with your approach of prioritizing those apartment buildings that, that have the greatest problem and are really not well considered in the current policy. But in terms of having this both easy to communicate and having solutions for other folks in the city who have that, um is, is there a reason you wouldn't want something like odd even?
Yeah, so I'm not a huge fan of the Minneapolis style because it gets you set into a period of time when you can and can't plow. Minneapolis, we're, we're different in Minneapolis where we still do have a large amount of, of room on our roads to park. Minneapolis is specifically all on-street parking and, and it's just a different animal. Um we try to remove the snow as soon as we can after it starts, or it stops falling, right? So that's, that's, that's our goal, we wanna get out there, get people moving. Their process, Minneapolis's process is, is more, um I, I don't even know how to say it, it's just, it's, it's, you do, we would, you do your main roads one day, then it's, then you prolong it, and that's not a real good way to protect our assets. Um you're going to have buildup of snow and ice on your roads all year long. Not saying that we don't ever, but um we're able to get onto those roads before things get packed down. Um I would say, go take a look at their, their residential streets and, and compare them to ours and, and that's kind of why we do what we do.
Okay, and then one other just detail, this isn't really addressed. I noticed last year, and I really appreciated it, that the snow emergencies generally had like a time, a standard time that they were enforced. I think it was usually like midnight when they declared it. I would say that was super helpful, cause I do hear from folks who like, they parked outside, they work downtown and they took the bus and now their car is getting towed and they can't do anything about it. So if, if there's any possibility of formalizing that we always or almost always start at ten PM or whatever time is appropriate, I think that would just be helpful for communicating regardless of what it is.
Yeah, uh thank you for that comment, it's something we do talk as staff, you know, we, we try as best we can um to get those notifications out by six, if we can. Um not, not that the snow emergency's gonna start at six, just that, hey, a snow emergency will be in effect at ten PM. Um just for that reason exactly. Um we'll try to get those notifications out. Again, every storm's different and, and um I can't promise anything, but yeah, we'll, we'll try to, try to do that.
Okay, and, and then just, I just wanna say big picture before, I, cause I think this is pretty much my last thing. This is awesome work, I'm really excited about this, this has been something that's been kind of bugging me in the back of my head for a long time, but hasn't really been a priority for me, so I'm super impressed with your approach to this. I think it's important to make the policy fairer for people who live here now, but I do think it has implications to what we can do with future development and ultimately making better use of, we've got a ton of on-street parking, a ton of wide streets that we really can't use well because we have this really rigid parking policy. So I think this is a huge step in the right direction and I'm really grateful for you taking it on.
Thank you.
Um before we continue with questions, is this the last slide, or is there more to finish up for this part of the presentation? Just, I wanna make sure you can get through it all.
This is the last slide.
It is? Okay, cool, thanks. Other questions, um Councilmember Trautman?
I just had two, two quick comments. Um one, I, I agree uh that, well, I, I, I agree that we, we do uh plowing more efficiently or thoroughly than almost any other city. I always considered fresh drinking, clean drinking water, number one, but also glad.
Right.
But um, but we're really proud of it and proud, proud of your work. Also, really, I just wanna specifically call out how, how grateful I am that um the city is looking at uh communities in parts of our city that were more historically excluded. And I just support one thousand percent, not just the process, not just the outcomes that we're getting to, but the process that, that you're going through. I, I just wanna, wanna lift up and just say this is, this is really good work and thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Trautman. Other comments or questions from council? Councilmember Whelan?
Um a couple of quick things that are um more tangentially related, but just uh you mentioned toward the beginning, always looking at kind of what are new ways to notify people. I think uh a key piece of the communicating about this is almost more communicating about communicating, like just letting people know what systems already exist. Um the number of people I've talked to who have no idea they can sign up for email or text updates is really high. And so I think um in, in addition to exploring new methods, just continuing to um promote the existing methods, um obviously, it sounds like there's already been some robust communication with the apartment buildings um for many years, but would um assuming that they would be notified about this so that they can, like expressly, I'm thinking specifically of like Richfield Towers and Seasons Park that don't have many parking options nearby, that now when they say uh like, we're gonna plow our lot, please go park here, that's open for the next twenty-four hours. Um and then the last thing, just wanna lift up, uh really not impacted by this, but just in uh snow removal in general, just wanna make sure that we continue to prioritize and don't lose the the emphasis that I think was added maybe two to four years ago of really prioritizing sidewalks similarly to streets and that um obviously someone's gonna get ticketed and towed if they park on a sidewalk at any point, but um wanna make sure that they continue to get prioritized too.
Yeah, absolutely, for, for this presentation, we, we kept it to streets, but yeah, it's, you're, you're exactly right. We were prioritizing trails, sidewalks the same, and, and have definitely changed our, our practices and procedures. And we still do, I mean, we're still looking to look at different equipment and things like that. Um I, I wanted to go back to this slide specifically, this is something we haven't done in our communications, I don't think, the, the, the Y, right? This is the Y, this is, this is um probably something that we can type up and add to um um the ticket packages. You know, hey, this is, this is why we want you to move. And again, there's another thing I, I failed to, to say when the map was up. Um those are occurrences and sometimes they're, they're the same, same vehicles, right? So it's, it's not a one-off, it's sometimes the same vehicle. So maybe a flyer with a Y on that ticket package is, is somewhere that we go. Not gonna say maybe, yeah, we're gonna go that way this year.
Great, thank you. Other comments or questions? I'll just add a couple, um I just wanted to say thank you for this presentation, I thought this was exceptional. And to me, it's just a really good example of what our city does. We are about the core services and we do it exceptionally well here in Richfield across all of our core services. And to me, it, it's just a, a great example of, you know, having multiple goals for each, a, a goal for each department, a goal for the initiative overall. Um taking an equity approach, but doing so in a way that is data-informed first and learning more before coming to solutions. You know, it's proactive in terms of how we deliver our core services. It's um collaborative across multiple departments, just as the delivery of our core services are already in nature. Um and then I appreciate the consistent approach that's being taken. So this could be applied to any other type of, you know, core service. Um and then it focus on, focuses on operationalizing this. So I just think uh it's a great example to me, the way that I think about the equity work should not be on top of the work that we're already doing, but looking at what we're doing and finding ways of how to do it with that equity and, and that data-informed approach in mind. Uh and then I'm assuming there's gonna be so much learning in app, applying this process and then refining. And these are all things that could be applied, whether it's to this one or this guide overall in Rubrik. Um but I just think it's a great example of, when I think about prioritizing equity, what it should look like. It's um embedding it into the excellent work we do already and building on, upon it versus, you know, on top of and in continuing to overburden our staff. Um and then just wanna say thanks to all of our staff that um make our core services move forward. This is a great example, all the different departments that um make our city be the city with the best plowed streets, the best response time. Um so thanks to all of our staff, that's it. Other questions or comments?
Oh, we have a quick, sorry, there's one slide, next steps. So um we'll be coming to you, uh so the, the adding, the adding the parking islands is um at the city manager's discretion. Um we'll be doing that um for this, for this snow season. Um the ordinance change will be coming to you with uh the change from two to four. Um so those are kind of our next steps. And then absolutely, we're gonna be reevaluating um everything that happens. Tracking those complaints, tracking those data points, how many snow emergency, how many less snow emergencies, that kind of stuff. Okay?
Great, thank you so much for the presentation. Thank you. Okay, and then now we can move to our next work session item.
Yeah, thank you.
With analyst Martinez-Govina, um city manager Rodriguez, did you want to open anything up or? Okay, I can just pass it to um equity administrator Martinez-Govina to review the preliminary equity plan and update. Hi, sorry, I was, thought we were waiting for something. Mayor, uh councilmembers, thank you so much uh for the opportunity. Let me just pull up the one second.
Okay, so thank you so much for, for the opportunity. And today, I just wanted to bring to you a preliminary plan. And again, I wanted to emphasize on preliminary because we wanna make sure that we have input not only from our staff, but also, most importantly, from community, to make sure that they see themselves in this plan and that they're able to provide important feedback. So in terms of, of how I see the equity work and the work that will be moving forward is first and most importantly, is that it acknowledges and that it's rooted on the acknowledgement that governments at all levels, whether it's federal, whether it's state, whether it's local, have been implicitly involved in creating inequities and continue to impact the livelihoods of our communities, not only here in the city, but um statewide. It also builds on the existing narrative on what the different departments, as you said today, have done and continue to do. And that's a story that we need to continue to tell to our community, that there's a lot of work that departments have done and continue to do every day to move equity forward. And how we need to move forward in a way that we can embrace change and be, and be comfortable being uncomfortable. And ultimately, the goal is to, as Mayor Regan Gonzalez mentioned earlier, how is it that we can really operationalize equity? So that it really becomes second nature and it becomes part of what we do as a city. I also wanted to discuss what the role of um equity administrator and how I see this role really come to life. I do see it as providing strategic guidance and direction, really making sure that we have a vision as a city, that it's a cohesive vision, that it's a vision that is shared internally and with community, and that is led by that input from community. That it builds that capacity necessary to sustain the changes. Because I know that um there has been a lot of changes in the, since the murder of George Floyd, where there was a lot of knee-jerk reactions. And one of the things that I, that I always remind folks, this is four hundred years in the making. So we need to make sure that whatever we bring forward, that it is going to be sustained and that it's gonna be carried out for future generations. So making sure that there, it does have that capacity. And then also maintain accountability. So providing those thresholds, providing um that system that is going to benchmark and making sure that it, it is data-driven, that we are collecting data that is reflective um of the way that we're oper- operationalizing equity, but that it also represents our community, making sure that we have the demographic data. And for the equity plan, what I did, I did a lot of research and talked with other local municipalities as to what they believe those timelines are. And again, this is very preliminary and this is based on some research that I have done a lot throughout um the country in general, because I did look across the country. A lot of equity programs in general are very much in their infant stages. Um there hasn't been a lot of focus. And now that a lot of local municipalities are moving forward, they're really thinking deeply as to what it means to really do this work well and do it in a way that is sustained. So for phase one, I want to really make sure that we're thinking and we're gathering all of that visibility and making sure that we are thinking about what is our current culture as an organization. So what is our culture able to, to sustain at this point? And what is our current practices and what does it mean to really do equity right now? So really looking as to some of the work that we're already doing through the strategic plan and other foundational processes, thinking about what is the history of the organization, of the city of Richfield overall? What are the historical contexts that we're working with? And what is the flexibility of the culture to really absorb this? And then also create that unified culture and language to make sure that we're providing engagement through the CARES team. In phase two, I um, we're working on really, what does it mean to collaborate? You know, what does it really mean to make sure that the community is being involved? And that we're developing this structure in place with them. And also thinking about what does it look to collaborate with community from a trauma-informed principle? So a lot of our community members have intergenerational trauma. So what does it look that, when we communicate with them, what does it look to engage community in a way that it's culturally specific? And making sure that we are all working together towards healing. Um in addition, streamlining some of those processes. What does it look like, as we saw in this uh pilot earlier, pilot program, what does it look like to really take a policy, a program, or a project and put it through an equity lens? And ensure that everybody, everyone in that process is informed. And then making sure that we are benchmarking early and often. So again, as you saw earlier in that example today, what does it mean to really gather that data and to use it in the future as well? And in phase three, really that's kind of like the magic phase, right? When you are really just have operationalized phase one and two, when you're fully embedded mechanisms throughout the city operational system, when benchmarking is just what we do as a city, when data and that transparency of the data is available for everyone in the community. And making sure that everyone understands that the equity plan is something flexible, it's something tangible, it's something that changes according to the demographics, according to the needs of the community. So just being aware that that is part of the process. So this is um a summary from what the CARES team had proposed a few years ago in which every Richfield resident is able to equitably access city services and enjoy a high quality of life regardless of their background or social circumstance. So that really speaks to, to the core of what equity can be like here at the city. And thinking about how is it that we do that um as a community and moving forward? So I know this is very text-heavy, but I wanted to make sure that we So I know this is very text heavy, but I wanted to make sure that we highlighted some of the work that we have done so far as a city. And I'm just going to mention some aspects. I thought in 2020, it was really amazing for us to be able to do some surveys. On staff in terms of equity and inclusion topics. So really, again, going to that principle of data and that's also part of. Understanding and getting a sense of the culture. Providing training, we provided training citywide on the way we see it. And I know that council members and mayor, all of you participated in that as well. And also connecting with, this is a really key piece in which I was connecting with other municipalities and we share resources. With through Equity Connect, for example, we had our HR department participate in a conversation as to how. How to move equity forward from the HR perspective and we participated with the city of Bloomington, with the city of Edina. St. Louis Park and Brooklyn Center. So that was a great learning opportunity to really think about how it is that HR can play. Or is one of the biggest players in terms of moving equity forward. During the pandemic, we all saw that there, the gaps, the gaps in equity and access just. Jumped incredibly high throughout our community, throughout the country. So what we did here at the city, we'd really try to look at how we were doing our outreach or communications from an equity perspective. What, by making sure that the, the different documents were translated and that some of our health. Emergency aspects were also interpreted. In addition, we did do a lot of work with our consultant Tiffany Jackson and the core team walkthrough. And please, city manager, correct me, it was about three months? Was it about three months where we participated? Or was it over the course of?
I think it might have been a little bit longer.
Yeah. So it was an ongoing, and it was a very intimate process because again, all of the work around equity and. It can be also about system change and it can be a very personal journey for, for everyone. So we did work on, with a consultant, but also to identify some of the goals and making sure that we have a cohesive plan for 2021. For 2021, as some of you remember, Bill Green started the work, really started to provide a foundation. As to what does it mean to move equity forward in what he would call commu- unity. And he, he really brought that perspective, that very just cohesiveness as to what it looks like to do equity in a way. That is, is sustainable. So unfortunately, with his passing. We, we continued the work and that he started and to this day, we're still continuing some of the aspects of his work. After I took the promotion as equity administrator, I met with the CARES team to bring that work forward. And we created what we called subcommittees, which we'll go into detail to really think about. The different aspects of, of the equity plan so that they could bring some recommendations forward. And today, up to this date, we have been continuing to, but when I say we is the CARES team. And I have been continuing to review some of those recommendations. The CARES team also came and presented to the directors under findings and recommendations. I and the city manager have met with multiple departments at this point to present some of these plans. And also gather information from them as to what are their priorities, what are some barriers that they see? In moving equity forward and what does it look like for each department to embed equity? So these are some of the examples. As I mentioned, I want to make sure that when we are having conversations. About equity that we're also building on what we have done. And putting that narrative forward that yes, there is a lot of learning to do, there's a lot of work that we need to do as a city. But that there is also a lot of ways that these departments have for a long time now been moving equity forward. So for public safety, they have really been focusing on being community, community focused. And as the demographics have changed, they have also changed. So to say that they are one of the most diverse. Departments in the state and for the last five years, they have had five speaking CSLs, bilingual speaking CSLs. And just thinking also about their community work to that JCCP program, which many of you know Patricia Ivan leads that. That work and to this date, they continue to do really amazing programming. Also thinking about access and language translating some key documents within that department. And throughout the pandemic, really ta- and to this day, tailoring some of the, those very specific health approaches. In addition, making sure that the use of force data is available to the public. And again, as previously mentioned, making sure that their community center approach is really shown throughout their different practices. Like acquiring the embedded social worker position in 2020 that I know has been incredibly impactful for the community. For public works, as you saw, they are leading some very innovative work as to how it is that they think about equity. So you saw their, their plan on the snow parking removal, that it is cross departmental, but they have been leading the work. Again, another example of cross collaboration is the prevailing wage that we saw. Two years ago in leading the work in that as well. And then their sweet streets program that really provided that a new, that very unique performance measures. And took equity as one of those perspectives. And please let me know if you have any questions as I go through some of these slides. For community development, we all know how deeply they think about the programs that they offer to our community. And making sure that they're really thinking about some of these historically excluded communities. For example. The kids at home program, it's, it's an incredibly successful program that is very unique here. Also the first home buyers program, I was actually very happy to participate at and interpret for a family that was receiving. The support and just hearing their story about this life changing moment and. The way that this program really transformed their ability to be able to have a home was incredibly impactful. Again, also the rental assistance program and we have Director Stark here as well, if. If he wants to pitch in at all, just in terms of, of some of the work that they have done during the pandemic. The fix up program and again, the concept of requiring twenty percent of affordable units. So just really thinking again deeply about what it means to, to provide access and to provide equitable services to. Communities. And I also have Director Merkel here in case she wants to pitch in on parks and recreation. And just, I mean, they had the opening of their inclusive playground just a few weeks ago, which really is, is one of the first and is incredibly. Was, it continues to be incredibly. Popular. I was able to be there for the opening and it was, it was an amazing, amazing event. And just continuing to partner with community and local organizations, I think they are leading the work on what it means to partner, what it means to. Think creatively and what it really means to embed equity in, in what they do. Would you like to add a couple of other things?
Yeah, I think a, a big piece that we're working on right now is really understanding the barriers to access and opportunity within our department. You know, we tend to see a lot of the same families, some of the same people and who are we not seeing, who is not coming to programming? So just better understanding. You know, what's prohibiting people from participating and attending and the things that we are able to. Hopefully remove as far as barriers go. A lot of it is done through partnership. You know, we have some excellent partners in our department. One that really rises to the top that we work with a lot in the summer is the Santa Foundation. And we're able to really provide some excellent programming that has great representation for youth. It's cost effective. Oftentimes, we can move around a little bit with the programming, so transportation hopefully is not. As big as a barrier for some, for some families to get kids out to programs. You know, a great example too is our partner, Three Rivers Park District. You know, like this Saturday, we have. A disc golf program. You know, it's a program we're not able to offer our community, but they have a portable program that they're bringing out. It's free of charge. They will be bringing staff and we'll be collaborating with them out there on Saturdays. So we're able to do more. And really stretch what we do have as far as resources and staff to provide the highest quality programming we can. But continuing to better understand the barriers and how can we make programming more inclusive and just keep moving in that direction.
Now I'll continue with administrative services. One of the key aspects that I talked about with administrative services was really HR and how human resources. Really thinking deeply about recruitment and retention efforts to diversify our workforce. But also thinking about the, the different programming, that, the different programs that we offer. And for example, with the vehicle services, it's the, one of the most front facing. Departments, so just really thinking as to how, how are people accessing the motor vehicle services? What, what is the experience, the experience of our community through that? And then also thinking about the engagement and communications, what does it look like to really engage with equity embedded? And thinking also about our elections process, I know that that is. One of the data points that I was trying to understand and I actually talked to. A few folks in the county as to how is it that we can really desegregate the elections and the voting data? To, to see what, what is the, the city's current data on who is. Or community that is registered to vote and those that are eligible to vote and what might be some of those gaps in, in that data. So just continuing to think deeply about that and in addition to the ADA compliance through the administrative services. For our fire department, they have been working with the CARES team. We have a member. Who has been providing really amazing perspectives from the fire department and that's the beauty of the CARES team. That we really do have representation from each department and that really creates really amazing collaboration. So with the fire department, they continue to find ways to increase diversity and to really do community engagement. With those historically excluded communities. And one of the things that. I was discussing with the chief and that he has been doing a lot is to really think about how to normalize the conversations around race. The conversations around equity and what does it really mean to include the, all of his staff in those conversations? So I know that he has been doing amazing work at really thinking of how to include those and really operationalize those conversations. In, in their daily work. And again, continue to find ways to partner with community organizations. And making sure that some of the fire safety programs that they have are fully accessible. So I'm not going to go through all of the work of the CARES team, but I know that they presented to the council a few years back. To really work through what their plan was for the future and. Thinking about what it means to, to think about race equity here in the city. So they have done a lot of, a lot of great work, especially with the educational piece. In bringing forth recommendations for training, having some conversations around. How our city is, has in the past maybe participated in, in, in policies or. Programs that might have created gaps and lack of access. So as I mentioned before, the CARES team, we decided to put together a few subcommittees. And each subcommittee really took a big chunk of the equity work. So one of the subcommittees was working on the feedback on definitions of the diversity wheel and. The equity and inclusion definitions. So really thinking about what does it mean to have a shared language as a city? What does it mean to have a diversity wheel? What groups, what identities get to be in the inner wheel? And what, who gets to be in the outer wheel and what does it mean like to have a representation from everyone in our community? And those members, as you see, are from different departments. Then we have a subcommittee on Ridgefield's calendar. Currently, we don't have an official calendar that is representative of our. Of our holidays and our cultural representative holidays. And we do do a lot of proclamations, but we don't have, let's say, a specific calendar that is, that is in effect every year. So that subcommittee is in charge and providing recommendations as to, according to our demographics and just thinking ahead. What are some of this culturally, culturally representative holidays? And also cultural holidays that could be critical. For example, we had in June a proclamation for Pride Month. So what other, what other cultures, what other specific historical context do we need to look at? There is Peoples with Disability Day and what other, what are some other different events that we might be. Look into honoring through an official calendar?
Yeah, and I've been lucky enough to be on a subcommittee looking at staff resources, education and training with Jennifer Anderson from Public Safety. And we want to make sure we understand as we look inward as an organization and our department and with individuals, that we understand the gaps. And make sure that our opportunity kind of fills in those gaps and that we have both formal and informal opportunities for staff. To attend trainings. It could be informal luncheon learns, engagement and discussions around things such as books or TED Talks. Also have some cultural opportunities. It could be bringing in food truck for lunch, could be a music opportunity. And some of the work will probably be unique to departments based on their needs and the work that they do. And we really see a lot of the training being collaborative with some of these other subcommittees. A great example is implementing the toolkit that, that you could saw with the snowplow example. Could we take that same toolkit and really train, you know, across the whole city and all the departments and how we can apply a similar toolkit to the work that each department's doing? And just having everyone the opportunity to understand and, and access that. But also continuing to build resources and having, you know, access for employees to, to look at those, to read those, to engage with those. So it's kind of where we're starting, understanding where we're at and then how to best kind of move forward to, to fill in the training gaps and needs.
And next we're going to have Nellie Jerome, who's going to walk us through the equity, the equity lens. And if you can refer to the one pager, that will be very helpful throughout this part.
Hi, yep, um oh, is this, is it on? Yes. Um so I I worked on the equity lens um with my other teammates. Um we looked at uh Seattle and Golden Valley who both have equity toolkits. I mean, we we kind of used what they had and we tailored it because it it, you know, it wasn't a great fit for for us in Richfield. Um so we developed the equity lens um to assess um policies and programs. Um and you have the draft in front of you, so you can see that there's um it's it's a tool that you can use, there's a flow, there's steps. Um the the equity lens lays out a process for for programs and each step has associated prompts. Which you did see in the snow removal pilot project. Um so in step one, you would set your goals and outcomes. Um you'd look at uh ma- maybe major goals and then some equity goals as part of your policy or your program. Step two, you'd uh look at the stakeholders that you'd want to be involved. You could review the demographic data or the maps which will be attaching to the toolkit or to the lens eventually. Um you'd be reaching out to uh maybe local groups or organizations and getting more involvement and maybe creating some deeper relationships. And step three, determining the benefits and burdens. So I'm thinking about are any groups more impacted than others? Is there a disproportionate impact on uh historically excluded groups maybe? Um step four, advancing opportunity or minimizing harm. This kind of requires some creative thinking, um maybe looking deeper. What are unintended con- consequences or how can how can we reduce those consequences? Um or where can we advance opportunity and make make something better? Step five, evaluate, raise awareness and be accountable. So this is an opportunity to reflect and improve some stakeholder relationships that maybe you've developed. Step six, reporting back, um if it's worth doing, it is worth analyzing. Um so you would maybe share your findings and your lessons learned with other departments. Um what else? Uh so I think a lot of the pieces of this are gonna come together over the next, our next future steps. Um we're gonna look at um sharing this and gathering even more feedback from other department directors. Uh we'll be testing it probably on other policies or programs, maybe real or imaginary. Um and then as the city goals and equity goals um are further developed for the city, we'll integrate that as well. Um and it's gonna be a very intentional and methodical review um as we gather feedback on this, so. Um I'm really excited, I'm really uh happy that I got to work on this, it was um super interesting. I think this is gonna be um a really good opportunity for different departments to kind of come together brainstorming. Um and I think I think it's gonna help um a lot of those historically excluded voices be heard too throughout the process. Um and I also want to thank Blanca because she's been an amazing lead on this project and it's been really fun and um rewarding to work on this.
Thank you, Nellie, any questions about those steps in that process? I did wanted to, um we are at the end uh for questions, but I did want to add um a couple of next steps. As uh Nellie mentioned, we are gonna be working, continue to work with departments. We want to make sure that we have at least a draft that is that we're gonna be able to share with community to gather some feedback, specifically when thinking about who are those historically excluded communities that we're not hearing from? And really looking as to the other tools that we're developing. For example, in this lens, it would be important to look at the diversity wheel. So when thinking about who is missing from this conversation and you have that visual of the diversity wheel, you can literally go through and say, have I heard from, you know, people uh that are different abled? Have I heard from um the Latino Latinx community, have I heard from the African American community? So really thinking deeply as to what that looks like and how you bring those voices into the conversation. And then in developing the the goals and developing really some of the the mission and vision of the equity work that we're gonna be doing. That's really going to be in cohesion with the strategic plan. We as, you know, we have worked in the last uh few months to really develop some of those or redesign some of those goals and um making sure that those are reflective of that so that we can really operationalize them and really share that language together. But also I want to make sure that the vision and the mission is something that is shared with community. And that's something that community can say, I was a part of this and my voice is represented in that process. So really working with departments because at this point and uh throughout the city, departments have very unique ways in communicating with the community. So working together with all the de- departments to find ways that we can cohesively create an again, an engagement process and really communicate uh together through the lens of equity, I think we do a really amazing job with our communications. But there's always um ways that we can improve that with the specific equity lens and perspective. So just really thinking about next steps, we're gonna continue to develop this plan, it's gonna continue to form into a lot more details. We're gonna be adding that process for community engagement. And then again, working with each department, continuing to meet with each department to work out what are their goals and what is that the work that they have been doing and what are some of their priorities?
Thank you.
Oh, sorry. No, I was just gonna say, if there are any questions.
Perfect, thank you. Now we have about uh less than ten minutes, so I think for questions, if folks could be brief so that everyone gets a chance. Any kind of questions or comments from council? Councilmember Supple.
Uh first of all, I just want to say thank you because it looks like we've had participation across many, many departments and a lot of really good work going on. And the thing that I was really excited about is that there's gonna be benchmarks and actual data gathered. Because people have like had really good intentions, but if you don't actually measure it, measure it, you don't know if you're making progress. So I was glad to see that you put those benchmarks in there. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Supple. Other comments or questions? Councilmember Whelan?
To um add on to that, I also really appreciate um that focus on data and like the actual outcomes. And uh one of the the questions you named in the middle there that really stuck out to me that I think needs to be the continual question that we're basing this work on is what is the experience of our community? And that I think there is um even even talking about data, like there's different ways to look at data. Um there's a way to have data of, we had this number of single digit households households of color who are able to buy a home through the the first time home buyer program, that's data. But if it's not also in the context of like are we still among the worst homeownership gaps in the country? Uh that that can be tokenizing. Um and I think in the same way, like how many officers of color we have is a really important question. But I know we also are asking the um or we're kind of waiting for an update and have started tracking the last couple of years. More of the data on like what is the impact on people of color who live or are visiting our community? And how often are they arrested and um that I I think asking those bigger questions about the experience um is so essential. I'm in the same way that uh like the the question we saw in the community survey and that you mentioned a little bit of like what is people's experience coming to our uh motor vehicles desk for for various things. And so just continuing to focus on like what is the experience of our community and that we have a variety of um ways to capture that data. I do think this this lens or toolkit is gonna be so essential. Um and then the last thing I'll say, just very briefly, I very much appreciate uh not to, just that explicitly race is named in the draft mission statement on here in a way that it wasn't in the previous one that I I think we can't do this work if we aren't willing to explicitly name the the ways that people have been historically left out.
Thank you, councilmember Whelan. Um any other comments? Councilmember Troutman?
Thank you, mayor. Just really briefly, I wanna I wanna thank you uh everybody here and and I think the the using a lens um to our policies is a really, really powerful tool. I appreciate so much on our me- on our staff memos that we we always have a legal lens that we say how 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 does the fact that we live in a a legal landscape, how has that impacted this policy? And just bringing this to the work here really critical, I hope you I hope you guys feel or you folks feel encouraged uh by just the the amount and the direction of the work and just by way of uh institutional memory. Because when I look around this room, I I think when I joined the council, only director Stark and our mayor were were around. Uh and so we've had a lot of change here and so just as a way of reflecting where we were when we began, or when, at least when I began, not when we, but when I began to to now, there's just been a lot of work, a lot of progress, which is not to minimize the work we have yet to do, but only to say we're we're making a lot of great progress. Um and so please uh please keep it up. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Troutman. Other comments? Councilmember Hayford O'Leary?
Um I don't have a a ton to add, I I agree with what's been said. I did I did just want to say, I really appreciated some of the specific examples in the presentation and that's really helpful. I think honestly, it's helpful for my own understanding because sometimes when I hear like actualized equity, it's hard for me to imagine what that means, so showing me what that means is really helpful. This department did that and it's especially helpful when we're talking to constituents, to residents to say we built that playground, we changed our rules for snow plowing, like it's it's understandable and tangible how these ideas and these intentions work in the city itself, so I appreciate that and I hope as things continue to improve that we continue to hear about those specifics.
Thank you, councilmember Hayford O'Leary. Um I'll just say excellent presentation, I cannot believe the amount of work that has been done in such little time since you've been um doing this, so that's so exciting to hear this framework. Um a couple of things that I thought of just while you were presenting. Um equity work is really about also organizational culture and how we work. And there's a lot of um, just like there's a lot of trauma for individuals and communities, there's also like a lot of difficulty and baggage and a lot of mixed emotions for people with this work. So I think about the role of your position, but this work overall in terms of how to support that organizational change and that that's um and and a transition and what does that look like? Um and again, I mentioned it in the first work session, but so that it's not seen as something that is in addition to and on top of um further burdening burdening staff, but really incorporated into how we do our work. And hopefully like making things easier and and uh for our staff as well and and more rewarding for our staff in our community. I think when I think about this work, I think about articulating what is and isn't the role of the city and how so a lot of times I feel like there's scope creep, like we have to do everything. And really, that's not the role of city, you know, necessarily to be doing everything, providing social ser- being a social service a- agency, a community organizing organization, a a city and running our core services. So what is in scope and what is not in scope, and then for those things that are not in scope. You know, we are partnering with community-based organizations, we're doing this and that, but I think when it comes to equity, that that can really um muddy the waters because there's different understandings around what the role of the city is and is not. Then just as a public health professional, I want to make sure that we specifically ask, what is the public health doing in uh the public health department doing to advance equity in their public health services um to serve our community? I, another question is, is there like a department goal around equity that each department could have? You know, that not necessarily an employee level goal, but maybe starting with something for the department that an annual goal setting um or employee goals, you know, everyone can drive to. Are, is there a question or two that um can be asked for every single interview for any new hire around equity and the role of that position, playing and advancing it? And then I wanted to add, um don't forget to leverage the boards and commissions as kind of connective tissue around community engagement and helping with equity. So that's, I think our boards and commissions are an underutilized asset and this is a space that could really help. And then are there some guiding principles that can help this work? I think, you know, just letting people know like this is tough, messy work, we're gonna make mistakes and it's okay and we're gonna learn. Um you know, dispelling things like having to feel perfect versus progress, you know, I think people, there's kind of the word police concept or call out culture that there's things that can has it give people hesitation in participating, so what are some of those things that we can put out there? Making sure people know this is not a zero sum game, bringing humility, vulnerability and bravery to the table. Um and then you talked about proclamations and one thing that I've always wished we could do with proclamations is are there kind of scopes or guidelines around proclamations, when do we choose to do a proclamation or not? And then can it be used as an opportunity to bring new community members and groups to city hall? And you know, and introduce community to city hall, could we partner with community-based organizations and highlight and support something? So it's not just something done that's a one-time insular thing, but that is a vehicle for um deepening uh relationships, so thank you so much for the presentation, super helpful and very impressive and how much work um is done. And again, another example of something that's been, has to be done across all of our departments in partnership. Other comments or questions from folks? All right, I will adjourn our meeting. Thank you very much.